Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting. The meeting is now open.
I move that we accept the minutes of December.
Planning board meeting, 11/12/2019.
Eleven?
Yeah.
And 11/12?
You're gonna do them as two separate?
11/12 and 10 and 12. 12/10?
Yep.
Gotta get your numbers straight in the right order.
Oh, that's a new.
Yes.
Yep.
You only had one meeting in these sales months. All those in favor accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, first order of business, the... Let's get this out of the way, this is simple. A new member, Keith Soucy, Sosi, to be on the Economic Development Committee. I sent this out way back, and he's recommended by the chairman, so...
I move that we jointly appoint...
Yeah, jointly appoint.
Mr. Soucy to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will sign it.
Can I see his name?
Yeah.
Excuse me, ma'am. I need the planning board signatures.
Okay.
That you have no secret bank accounts.
I told you they'd catch us.
Yeah. Yeah, sign your secret bank account, too.
Can I borrow your pen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, he dropped it over, okay. What is this? It's your turn.
Thank you.
Helloise, you wanna hold on to that till the others come in? (pause) June's gonna give you a hard time about that reimbursement, 'cause your bill doesn't say what it's for.
I know, I'm gonna have to ask him for a new...
Tim?
Helloise?
If you wanna tell me the streets that you're looking for, I can fill up a street listing for those individuals, too.
Well, I've already got everything written out, most of the names in. So I was just making... 'Cause that was from an old street list, and I thought, you know, some of these people may not exist. Well, they may exist somewhere.
They exist, well...
Well, maybe not, but they may not exist here.
We got somebody resigning from the Economic Development Committee.
Didn't we vote on that last week, last time?
Did we vote on that? Yeah, we just gotta sign the letter now.
Just gotta sign the letter.
Okay, good. So we voted on that, December? What was it, December?
12th.
12th?
Yeah, 10th, sorry, 10th.
Oh, wait a second, what is this? What do we got here? Did we do that last week?
That's for the... We tried that. That's for the money we owe.
That was turned down?
Yeah, that's the money I paid.
Okay, we had a holiday greeting from Haley and Ward.
They give...
And said, "In the true spirit of joyous holiday season, Haley and Ward has made a donation on your behalf to Boston Children's Hospital."
Good.
Nice card.
What time is the first order of business?
Whatever, I don't put times in. I lost the... Did he get it? Did he get it? Did I give you... No, that's the one I gave you. How do it? I guess the other group, they don't seem to be coming today. The rest of the...
Jay's away.
Jay's away, okay. Somebody's nice and organized. I gotta put it back in here. Okay. First, an announcement, personal announcement. For the last six weeks, I've been over cancer treatments. Weekly chemo and daily radiation.
Oh, boy.
And snorries for the... Oh, I'm just announcing I'm over cancer treatment. Cancer in the esophagus and the stomach. It ends tomorrow, and then a month later, I get a scan to see if it spread anyplace else.
Right.
And then decide on an operation to take it out. And... But it's left me beat up.
Oh, yeah.
Lack of energy. And so, I appreciate every help you guys have given. And I don't know if I'll make the whole meeting, but we'll see what happens.
Take care of whatever you need.
How's Dennis doing? How's Dennis doing? Did he figure out what his problem is?
Flu.
Oh, it was a...
Rheumatitis.
Okay, 'cause he was under...
Pined off of...
What was on it, didn't he? What was on it, didn't he?
He's gonna have it replaced.
Oh, okay, that was something different, all right. Okay. We can sign the plan for Indian Farmer States. I think all we have to do is sign it.
Yeah, we've already gone through all the motions.
So, you wanna make a motion that we sign the plan?
No, we've done it.
Okay.
There's two sets.
Oh, one for Hudson, one for...
Yeah, we gotta sign both of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is Indian Farmer States.
Oh, yeah.
We went over it last time.
Yeah, we waited till the appeal was over. Right?
Cancer of the esophagus and end of the stomach.
So how many...
Just finishing the treatment.
Wanna go to Middlesex, wanna go to...
Today.
Yep.
Tomorrow. I'm just finishing the treatment, I'm getting weekly chemo and daily radiation.
How many weeks did you do that?
Six weeks.
Yeah, did my eight, I think. I took it for advanced pancreatic cancer and advanced liver cancer.
Oh, okay. You deserve an extra couple of weeks.
What would happen is I would take it, and then I would go to about the second day, and all of a sudden halfway through the day, I go.
Yeah, I'd just be feeling kind of lethargic and...
But I figured it's a success, 'cause I'm still irritating people. You want me to come over there and sign something?
Yeah, we're gonna bring it over to you.
I commend the board for having assigned them that. I don't know how many boards I go to and everything.
I actually have...
Yeah, you can't show it when you're on camera.
Every time you bring on the... That's great. That's a secret place.
Well, it isn't if the camera's on. It's all over now.
That's what it is.
Yeah, that's me, I took at it, too.
I'd rather... You see, we go through the operation, I'd rather not go through the operation, very extensive operation.
Mine was 14 hours.
As bad as Tesh.
I went in at 6:00, I'm trying to see.
More operation, consistent.
Sup, Tom?
Definitely put one on top, one on the side.
How many copies do you have?
Each page is two sets. Each page is two sets, so we sign each page? And you got no over there, okay. So if we... Paper copies? Yeah, we need some paper copies.
Yeah, I'll show me tomorrow, I'll tell them. Am I letting you down?
Never.
That's where we're gonna keep it.
Especially when he's stealing the name of your farm.
Working in single...
Need one for the assesses. Two. Yeah, two's good. Save the paper.
Is that a calendar?
Is this? No, I'm... Plan. Plan.
Did he bring another pen?
Hmm? Did he bring another pen?
I don't know if Tim did with it.
Tim, you didn't have the pen?
Was that one not working?
No, I just said she can sign while I'm signing the other copy.
I hit it again.
It's on camera.
The clerk asked. I don't think she has to sign, right, does she?
No.
Oh, no, she does, really.
She does?
Step up, please.
It's that other pen. Hold on, please. Thank you. If you sign, just the first page or all of them.
Where is the documents that I changed?
Right here.
Well, that gives me my dates.
It looks like you may just be the first page.
No, every page.
Is it every page for her, Tim?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it seems like it does.
Just start signing. Helloise, another copy.
Since my mind is... My mind is feeling, my writing is also feeling. I can't talk straight anymore, excuse me. I've had a little bit of a stroke. And there's three.
Yes, ma'am.
Who do we keep?
We were at the next meeting, the last meeting.
Two towns.
For real, and it's gotta be recorded in most of the...
Is there another one over there I have to sign?
Two plans.
I haven't signed.
Let's check it, see how many you got.
This one? I might have done two of those, but I think there's one still missing. I can't reach up anywhere with it, so...
The other thing, last... Last year, I booked a three weeks of February. This will stop, we have to this month after the cancer treatment stops until they get reevaluated. So I'm gonna take this two weeks, assume I'm feeling okay.
Where are you gonna go?
The Caribbean. Go down a four, go to the top, on a ship, and cruise around. Someplace warm. So, that first meeting, I'm in February, I mean, so, Tim, can you take care of the agenda? I'll be at the next meeting, we'll work that out. If you need help with the agenda, I'll see if you can get help without even needing a phone.
Did you write up one over there?
I'll check it, I'll check it.
Yeah. Same thing.
Should we just answer the seven veils or something with this? Is this the 10th, 11th, or is this...
Yeah, put it in there, would you?
We got more things to work.
How's your brother?
He's in Mass. And been there a month.
Yeah.
He make a home, end of the week.
What are they doing?
Same thing, chemo and radiation. Both, yeah.
All righty, thank you, Helloise.
You're welcome.
Did I sign over here already?
What's that?
Did you sign that one last, says you're not... Your campaign funds are all accounted for.
Would I get too squashed?
Oh, thank you.
You got a pen? Ron, I need a pen.
There's a regular pen. Here's a regular pen.
You just helloise.
Thank you.
I didn't see when I thought it was laid out flat.
Yeah.
Ron, did you ever meet Chandrika's husband?
Thank you very, very much.
Once, yes.
I was his longest patient.
Yeah, you had to change doctors, but not the last anymore.
Right. I've been with him for 32 years.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night.
Have a good one.
Okay.
Leo's here for River Road West.
Wait a second, let's get them, I'm trying to get the quick ones out.
He's a quick one.
Oh, he's a quick one?
Yeah, it's an A&R.
Well, we got A&Rs, and we got A&Rs. We got Bigelow, River Road West.
I was just going in the order in which you listed them, I'm sorry.
Okay, we got that one done. We got the Indian Farmer States done, and River Road West. We got going, River Road West. Oh, there you are.
Hey, come sit down.
Yeah, sit down over here.
Right on the floor.
I will do that, too, I'm tired.
I'm Leo Bertolami, River Road West, and I have an A&R.
And I'd like to subdivide the property, I'm sorry. What's your address, there?
100 River Road West.
100 River Road?
Yes.
The old school, the old?
Yes.
Everybody...
Better Forest.
Yeah. Most people know it as that, but when you took the sign down, new people are not gonna know what tech's going on.
Well, if I sell this, which looks like it's gonna happen, I'm gonna start doing the barn. You know, I'm gonna start with a roof, and, you know, I'd like to move some things around, but... And speaking of Walter, I don't see him here. He dictates my path.
You're on the camera, too, man, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. But I'd like to start, well, you're not here for that, but I'd like to start doing something with this here, maybe trimming it, and getting a door in there. These are roofs, first off, for anything.
Okay, so this is... This is a building, and you gotta get a building permit for this when the building inspector... So that's not ours.
No, no, no. Just to be able to subdivide the lot.
Okay.
What's your name?
I'm sorry?
What's your name?
Leo.
No, your last name?
O Bertolami, D-E-R-T-O-L-A-M-I.
Ask me in 10 minutes, I probably won't remember, but I try.
Sorry.
I was adding up the linear footage, all of a sudden.
There's three copies here, you want a copy to take over there?
Thank you.
So I would that we approve a plan dated January 8th, 2020, drawn by Stamsky and McNary for Berlin Village LLC. Berlin Village LLC.
It's in Berlin, and it's still a village, yeah. Especially after we fix it.
Day one and two on River Road West. D book 3553, four pages, seven.
Do you mind saying what you have planned for this?
This is under agreement right now, this year. I believe they wanna fix up the dwelling and live in it. And they're gonna keep the back lawn for themselves, but it's being sold to an investor group. So they are working with the people within that are renting right now. So, it changes quite a bit as we have it under agreement from time to time. Each year, it gets more and more... Each year it gets more and more activity. The numbers and hurt it. I think the problem is, and if this was under, and I'm not up on zoning in another town, but if this was in the overlay or if this was taken into consideration, like the package store land in the hotel, new overlay or new zoning, this piece would have been gone ten years ago. That's what the realtor says, now I don't know if that's true.
What is this, commercial villaging? This is commercial...
It's all commercial village, yes. But he said if the zoning went like, the big piece that's being developed with the hotel...
River Bridge.
River Bridge, yes. This would have been sold a lot easier. But, I didn't know, I wasn't at the hearing that night and to try to get it on and so on, but it'll be fine. This is a nice building, it needs a lot of TLC. And Mr. Bean's building is, is a nice building for what he uses it for, he takes care of it. Let's know about it. Yes, it is.
And this is, we've got rental, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Rental people, isn't it?
Yes.
I see some cars there, those cars are all...
Yeah, every building except the house is leased. The house was leased up to about three years ago, but they broke in, they took all the copper, they broke in again, and it's just been a vandalism, it's been incredible, we have a light...
People from Marlborough, probably.
I don't know who it is.
It will be from Berlin.
Berlin police, police are always very nice when they come up and so on, but it's, it's never ending. But we'll get some old lights in there and hopefully some new owners, and I think it'll be okay. And, um... What was I gonna say, George lived there for, for quite a few years.
Did he?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, out.
He kept moving around, George.
Oh, George?
George, yeah.
He, he was the zip code.
Oh, yeah, I never bothered.
Did you second?
Oh, he say hi to me.
Second?
Yeah.
Didn't even hear what we were doing.
Any more discussion? No more discussion? We'll take a vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is seventy-five dollars.
Okay, thank you, and how about these here?
Town of...
Town of... Look at that.
Seventy-five dollars. Wow. Full amount.
Not the amount.
Seventy-five thousand.
The bank might call.
You got the pen?
What did I do, my pens, my signing pen? Oh, this is it?
He's giving it.
I gave it to you.
Oh, I took it out of your hand. There you go, sir.
Okay.
And suppose you want your pen back too?
Yes.
Okay.
I've had people do that. Where's my pen?
I always come home with more pens than I leave with in the morning. I know we're on camera, but do you have a rotator cuff? Right hand shoulder?
My doctor has told me he thought I needed it replaced, but he said he wouldn't do it, because I'm so old that he figured it wouldn't last.
You get over forty, they don't wanna touch you at all.
And I've been my eightieth years, so I'm right behind him.
Well, that's good.
But I don't think that's true, because I was on the... I think it was inflammation.
Really? Mine's definitely what they call cuff, C U F F, which I thought was cup, and someone corrected me. Everything's fine, except if you extend out to here in front of a white... Oh.
You know what I can't do is put my seatbelt on.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, just when it's out, lift it up in the air, oh.
And I just can't lift anything up with the belt?
Well, that does that too, when it gets up in the air.
Yeah, somebody else told me, said it ain't that...
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah. That's what mine is.
Do you have it fixed?
No, it won't, the, the sports doctor at Newton Lodge, he said he won't do it. He said if you really want me to do it, I'll do it, but if you don't, first of all, I don't think it's gonna work, I said, you're a positive guy. And if you don't do all your exercises and all your physical therapy, it'll be worse than what it is now, it's all I had to do was hear that. And I said, I don't wanna do it.
I do, I wanna do something.
Yeah. Like everybody else, I slipped on the ice a few weeks ago, and I had my hammer, and it didn't, it, it turned over. Fortunately, nothing, all in front of me, I slipped on the ice, it's out for three months.
That's how I found my doctor, three years ago.
You slipped?
Ninety percent therapy.
Oh, boy. See, nothing would, I haven't slipped before, but this was pretty good, right in the air and down. And generally, I was...
I read my video over to Royal Hospital, because my husband was going to find out.
I see.
I got in by swinging my whole body around and stepping. And the doctor... I didn't think it was. And he said, well, how did you get in? And I told him, he said, well, go out the same way.
Wow. Yeah.
And it actually took me months of physical therapy to get it back.
I went for a year, three times a week, an hour a time, and it helped, it certainly helped, it was just...
That's yours?
Those are mine? Do I need? So I, this is the MyLabs, okay?
I guess filed the registry.
Yep, okay, we're good? Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
You too.
Okay, take care now. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, you need a pass, David. Bigelow Road.
Hey, come on!
If you have tomatoes you need to throw, I'll be right behind her. How are you folks?
Okay.
Wayne Bellick, WDA Design Group, here on behalf of Kathy Adams from Kane Industrial Trust. We're here for the...
Kathy who?
Adams.
Oh, my God, are you related to my husband?
I don't know.
How many Ds?
So the, I have the easel and the, the plan up there, but I figured we might as well go here, I mean, it's such a comfortable crowd, so... So, the, the plan had gone before the town of Hudson. The property falls into, in both towns, it was before the town of Hudson, last week, where it received the endorsement of the Hudson Planning Board. Tom, I can get one over the year-end as well. So basically, what they're looking at is the, the site is, this is Bigelow Road here, I-495, Yent Whistle Building right here. So, basically what they're looking to do is, if you look in the lower corner, the lower left-hand corner, they're generating frontage in the town of Hudson to provide access to the land out back, which is located in the town of Berlin. The town line runs through here, just behind the parking lot and the improvements on the Yent Whistle property, through this area here and then across 495. So the site in, in acreage is about twenty-six point, uh, seven acres. Of that twenty-six point seven is about twenty-two point seven in the town of Berlin. So, basically, what we wanted to do was create a conforming lot, again, it's in, in both the town of, of Berlin and Hudson. So in order to do that, we took land from the Yent Whistle property, which is owned by the Kane Industrial Trust as well, and we wrapped the frontage around a half-foot wide strip in here, there's no lot width requirement in the town of Hudson. Again, they endorsed it last week. Wraps around here and then continues up the existing lot line, which is over in here, and then continues along here, and then...
I got lost, I got lost with this.
Okay. So, basically, the existing roadside line does this. And it wraps around...
This is Bigelow Road?
Yep. And it wraps around like this.
Okay.
And then it continues, you know what I might do?
I have an extra paper, one.
Yep.
See, I have an extra one.
I've got it, comes around like this and over like that. Now, if you look in the lower left-hand corner, you can see we have a call out here for zero point five feet. So, along this radius, there's a, a strip that wraps around here that's a half-foot wide, to give it the frontage for lot one.
And that's all in, in Hudson?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, that generates the, the frontage for the entire lot. And that's basically it.
In Hudson?
In Hudson, and then the, the lot continues in the town of Berlin.
Well, that's... I mean, this is our lot, this is Hudson lot, whatever frontage they need. There's no frontage in Berlin.
Huh?
We've been here before.
This is a split lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, what we said before was that in order to build in Berlin, if you wanna build a building in Berlin, you have to have frontage on a way in Berlin. And you don't have frontage on a way in Berlin unless you come through the subdivision process and create a way. Now, that doesn't have to be a public way, it can be a private way. But if it's built to subdivision standards and brings frontage into Berlin that we create through the development of the way... And you have, because what we said was, you have to come in here and essentially create this bulb here, so you can get hundred, what, hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage in Berlin. Because right now you have frontage in Hudson for a lot that's in Berlin.
Okay, so, Tim, what happens with, like, parcels up at BJ's, where we have split lots? We have parcels in Hudson?
It's an overlay, it's entirely different.
How about Bannador?
Bannador has got frontage on River Road.
How does it have frontage on River Road?
Well, if you look at the plan, you're gonna see... I mean, they did it years and years and years and years and years ago. But it was a... They created frontage, there's a frontage strip on River Road. Was my, that, we were looking at the other day, and I said, that's where the frontage is.
It was before Donald Win, Donald Win was...
Didn't exist.
Yeah. So, I mean, maybe you can explain to me how we can create a buildable, I mean, if, if you, if you go to the building inspector and say, I, I wanna build on this lot that has frontage on this road in Berlin. Yep. You won't be able to demonstrate that you've got any, so that's why we were earlier on talking about creating that bulb. Okay.
That was, my understanding was that was prior to having a legal lot in the town. Because at the time, they didn't have a conforming lot in Hudson.
Right.
Right? So now you have a conforming lot in Hudson, which has frontage.
But you don't have a lot in Berlin with frontage.
You're using the lot that's conforming to access the back lot.
So...
But not conforming in Berlin?
No, 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 because it's a, it's a, it's a split lot, it splits two zones, splits, splits two towns.
Mike. I've never, I don't believe I've ever signed a plan for a, I mean, we've signed plans that say not to be considered a building, building lot if it doesn't have frontage, or it doesn't meet the acreage or frontage requirements. But... I'm at a loss to try to figure out how I sign a plan that is gonna create a buildable lot in Berlin that's gonna have a driveway. So essentially, if... If anybody wanted to build on a parcel in Berlin... See, I look at like this Indian farm.
The street address is Hudson.
Essentially, they, they, they come through Berlin, they created a subdivision road in Berlin.
Correct.
But then they create a subdivision road in Hudson to supply the frontage that they need for those lots. And they had to come to us, because they needed to create that road through Hudson to get to Berlin.
But they didn't have a legal lot in Berlin to access that back land. Right?
They had a, they had land in Berlin that they could use to get to land in Hudson.
That's correct.
And they needed to build a, a road in Berlin to get to a road in Hudson, where they had frontage that then allowed them to build in Hudson. In this case, we've got a road in Hudson that's gonna lead to a road in Berlin that allows them to build in Berlin.
But it's a public way, it's a public way.
One, one lot, they've created one lot out of that. Versus the subdivision in Indian farms, they were individual lots, serviced by a lot through, in Hudson, not in Berlin.
I'm still, where's the, where do I have frontage? I mean, I, I'd look for, so what we're saying is that if I have frontage in another town, and I can build in, in, in my town, regardless of whether I have frontage or not.
Wait, because you created one lot.
I won't sign it, I'll do some research and find out if that makes sense. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign a plan that did that, because I don't know what slippery slope that leads us to. I wanna make sure I understand it.
The world ends at the town line.
So, with respect to the, the zoning bylaw and the subdivision rules and rights, within all the communities that I've worked, if... If it's specifically in the regulations, it says the access through to the lot needs to be within the town serving, within the, the town that the lot, lot is located. I didn't see anything in the town of Berlin that basically said that in order to have a lot in Berlin, the frontage needed to be located in Berlin as well.
You have to have frontage in Berlin.
You're just saying the, it says you have to have frontage in...
Being a subdivision control lot.
And the frontage isn't a function of where it is, it could be anywhere.
You can have frontage one place, access on another place.
Right. Right.
Right, so the subdivision that just went through, they didn't have a public access road, they didn't have a public road in Hudson to build on, and the only way to get to their land in Hudson was to go through a public way to get to it, and that public way crossed through Berlin, which is why that had to be done.
Right.
This is different, there, this is a public way in Hudson.
Right.
And with the generated hundred and fifty feet of frontage, that creates the frontage lot that generates it to be a buildable lot in Berlin.
How much frontage? One, one fifty.
There's a hundred and fifty, which is the requirement in Hudson.
So, Berlin's gonna...
So the, the, the...
So in Berlin, you need a hundred and seventy-five feet on a, on a radius of a cul-de-sac, but we're gonna waive that?
No.
Because it's, the frontage is in Hudson?
It's, it's an A and R lot.
In Berlin, with frontage in Hudson, you're saying?
Correct.
But the frontage in Hudson is a hundred and fifty, and we require a hundred and seventy-five, I think, on a curve, but... So I just, I need to do more work. I, I'm not, I'm not content on trying to sign a plan that's got questions in my mind, I've never done anything like this before. So I'm perfectly willing to be able to find out from some folks that have, you know, been in the business other than the developer or the engineer, I wanna talk to some other parts of the tribe, you know? So let me ask you this, Tim. Have you, so is one of your hangups, the way this is presented is, is one lot with the frontage in Hudson and the remaining, the remainder of the lot in Berlin? Presented as one lot versus two, because you made reference to the not the building lot scenario. So, the way I've also seen this presented is that this is created as a parcel... Right. With legal frontage in the town of Hudson. Right. And then this is created as a parcel, and they're both stated as not being building lots. And then there's an, an additional note that says parcel A and parcel B are to be combined to create lot one.
Is that what you're gonna do with this?
Well, see... That's what Savit did, that's what you've tried to do with one plan, is to, is to combine them initially right off the bat. So, with this, but that the original plan, so there was a plan done back in the eighties or, or the nineties that did not have the required frontage, was only fifty feet or thereabouts. And what they had was a parcel A and a parcel B, but they didn't have enough frontage in town, and there was nothing that further explained that they were to be combined to create a lot. They couldn't create a lot, because they didn't have the required frontage in Hudson. So what this...
So what this does is there are two ways that, that you could approach this. You could do it as was done, as one lot with the minimum required frontage in Hudson, or the other way you could do it as two parcels, where you have a parcel that has the front, meets the frontage requirement in Hudson, a front parcel and a rear parcel that individually are not building lots. Okay? Actually, this lot would comply as a building lot because it meets the area and the, the frontage requirement in the town of Hudson. Then it would, to Tim's point, the, the one that you're familiar with, is that this lot, this parcel would be a parcel, and on that call-out, it would state, "Not a building lot." In the notes, we would say that this, uh... So for instance, if this was a compliant lot
Right.
with area and frontage, then it would say, "Lot one in parcel A." And then there would be a note, "Lot one in parcel A are to be combined to create lot one A." So basically, it's the, it's the same thing, but rather than breaking it out into the two parcels, it's created as one entire lot. So it's a couple steps. Instead of having it as separate parcels, it accomplishes the same thing in the end.
Yeah.
I think if they do that, then it can't be conveyed. One parcel can't be conveyed, conveyed separately from the other.
That's correct.
Locked together.
Yep.
We, we, you, there is certainly precedent for accessing parcels. Maybe not in our town, but in, in the state for accessing parcels through another town. As long as they have the requirements.
Required frontage for that town.
For that, for that particular town.
For the town they're in?
Yes.
So Collins Foundation.
Collins is one, there's one up in, in Lawrence, Lowell, where they access it through...
So what we're saying is that we waive the frontage requirement. We waive... Right?
You basically, no, it's one, one entire lot. It's just split by the...
But it's got, it meets Hudson's requirements and not ours in terms of frontage and et cetera.
Right, can you waive the frontage requirement in another town?
What, what you're saying is I don't need to. I don't need to waive anything. I just accept the fact that if Hudson's was a hundred feet, it would be a hundred-foot frontage.
That's correct.
And that you drive through from that frontage into Berlin.
That's correct.
So I'll do some homework.
Can we, um...
I mean, you can, maybe you guys wanna agree to sign it and go ahead.
Can, can we, can we, um, why don't we have a chat with Scott?
I think there's a couple people we could talk to. I mean, I, I talked to Central Mass, and I talked to... Oh, I talked to the building inspector and... Because he's got other towns under his wing, so he, he'd probably be able to say, "Yeah, we do that all the time." You know, Charlie's rule was always, you know, the world ends. We don't follow that the way we used to, certainly. Because you've got situations where, you know, you might have frontage in Hudson, you know, that makes a lot compliant if it's got acreage in Berlin, that sort of thing, but...
If we wanted to create more than one lot, so this is just one building, then we'd have to have a whole full subdivision plan. But since it's only one lot and only one thing can be built there, that's why this...
That's why we're not going through the subdivision control process.
Right.
To create one lot.
Which certainly makes it easier for us.
But do you think we could get this done by the next meeting?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, a couple quick phone calls. All I want is assurance from people that are familiar with Berlin's situation and also familiar with what goes on in the world at large. But I, I mean, I don't ever remember being in a situation where we've signed a plan that says, you know, there's frontage in some other town.
Mm-hmm. Understood, Tim. There's always something new. You know?
Oh, yeah.
So in all the years that you folks have sat on this board, you never had this situation?
No, I've been here since...
The other thing we've done is the overlay.
Yeah, overlays, you know, throw, throw frontage and all that stuff right out the window because they are an entity under themselves. So we've done that with Highland Commons, we've done it with, with River Bridge, and we've done it with Solomon Pond. Yeah. You know, I mean, access to all of Highland Commons is out of Hudson, access to all of Solomon Pond is out of...
Marlborough.
Marlborough. But the majority of the buildings are in Berlin.
Right. Never easy.
And in those, we had specific statements about what the frontage requirements would be and, you know, all that sort of stuff. Because we reduced the frontage, you know, like Sears, all those pads are separate independent pads.
Mm-hmm.
And they've all got frontage. So there's some crazy little squiggly lot configurations over there for them, because they got separate ownerships. Highland Commons was easier in that regard because they didn't end up in a situation where they tenants wanted to own, you know, own their private pads, so...
Mm-hmm. So at this point, it sounds like the...
Well, can we, how about this? Can we do our homework and then have you guys come in?
Yeah, just do a continuance till the next...
I'll have you, I got you on the agenda for the next meeting, twenty-eighth.
Beautiful, thank you.
When is it?
Thank you.
Twenty-eighth, two weeks.
Of a January, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to hold you up, but...
No, it's fine.
I'm just...
Okay, so, Tim, I've served my community since the nineties, and I've done the same thing. I unfortunately had some reactions from proponents that weren't pleasant. I was charged at one point by this humongous guy. Sitting at the bench, and I stood up, and I stood up, and he thought that I wanted to square off with him. I stood up so the guy wouldn't kill me, you know? So he charged, he charged the bench, and I stood up, and then now, now it's the testosterone, and this guy's going nuts. And he's thinking, "Okay, you wanna go?" "No, I don't wanna go," you know? And so, but so we, we appreciate where you're coming from. If this, if I've, if I was in this situation where I doubted something, I would also do the same.
Well, where it's only two weeks and, uh...
That's fine.
Yeah, that, that works out.
Yep.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah, twenty.
Appreciate you didn't charge us nothing.
You're kidding me, I'd never make it to you. I go to stand-up, I'd throw out my back.
Getting close to forty years now, and...
No kidding?
And I, and I remember only once where I exchanged words with a, with a proponent.
He was over in that meeting hall over there, yeah. He scared the hell out of me.
It was in here, I, I got hot.
Really? I remember that one over there.
Remember?
Because I've known him since he was a teenager.
Yeah, no, it was that one and the, and the, yeah, so it's been twice.
Over there, yeah, I, I remember that one, because I was...
So, Tim, you're related to Clyde, right?
No.
No.
I'm not related to anybody.
They won't claim him.
No.
Way, way, way bad.
Yeah, you can see a little bit of the resemblance.
Cousins or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know how he's doing? I haven't seen him for years.
Well, his son, Andrew, his grandson, Andrew.
Yeah.
And my son hang around a lot.
Oh, okay.
So I, yeah, we keep up to date.
Nice. A lot of the wheelers around, isn't there?
Yeah, not as many as there used to be.
You can't swing a dead cat without hitting the wheel.
No, I've worked with three wheelers in my career from this area.
Yeah.
Mark, Mark, Phil, and, uh...
So I'll, I'll make a...
You're gonna check with the building inspector.
I'll check with them.
I'll check with Scott, and you're gonna check with who else?
Central Mass, yeah.
You wanna take a copy, just see, see what...
Yeah, yeah.
So just out of curiosity, with respect to, so any idea when, when you might be able to get back in touch with us to let us know if there's something that needs to be tweaked, if everybody
Just come...
agrees?
The twenty-eighth.
Okay. So if, okay.
If there's something, if there's something that needs to change, we'll tell you.
Okay, great.
Before the, before the...
Okay.
And, and, uh...
Then we'd have to go back to Hudson.
Yep.
Because you, you can get in touch with them.
With Scott?
You can get in touch with...
Yes.
Catherine Inspector.
Yep.
On the email.
You wanna pay with a copy?
Terrific.
You need to pay with a copy?
Actually, I have the plan electronically, so no, I don't know.
Okay. Well, God, this my life, would my life...
We'll do this one too, then.
Good to know that I don't, I don't have to bring the endorsement pens, right?
Well, you can bring one and leave it.
Yes. Actually, you guys want these, I, I have no need for them. Actually, just try, which one do you like? Try one, I don't need, the medium one, it's kinda beefy. You don't like that baby, huh?
I don't like that.
You don't like?
Yeah, it's...
I like that one.
How do you like this one, Tim?
I like, I mean, if you look at what...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Is that what you like?
Yeah.
There you go. Have a good day, guys. It's all yours.
Put it in our collection.
And this is not a bribe. I don't want that to be construed as a, as a fifty-cent bribe.
It wasn't on camera, I could whack them. Or you can have whack them even on camera.
Wouldn't be the first time. Yeah, so you're saying that you guys have known each other since...
I lived on, I lived on the rental property, on their farm.
I met her when I was like twenty-four years old, and I looked like a beetle. And the next time she saw me, when she walked into the room, I looked like this guy here. She walked in, she goes, "My god, what the heck happened to you?" It's like I hadn't seen her in like twenty-five years, like, "Very nice, that's nice." I still remember that. I'm trying.
All right.
Thank you, folks, much appreciated. You folks have a great night.
Okay. That's what I said. Matt over there.
He was here.
Did we, we got a Form A on this one for Berl, Leo, didn't we? Yeah, we did. We need to put the Form A and give it to Eloise?
It's right there with the check, I think.
That's gonna go to Eloise.
Right.
And that's ours, okay. My town, all of my notes for town report.
Jay's doing the tab.
Jay has got, he already got a copy of them. In fact, he even complimented me on the...
Thoroughness.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
I've always...
Where is he?
In Canada.
Snowmobile.
Snowmobiling.
When is the warrant closed?
Usually it's around Valentine's Day.
So, so we might have two meetings before the warrant closes?
Yeah.
We have...
I would just...
I think we had, we talked about...
The ZBAs got a couple things that... So... Oh, that's the, does ZBA meet tomorrow night?
I... They had to meet, a meeting last, last week. But I think they wanted an early meeting in February, maybe?
We don't need this.
Not yet.
A week before.
We'll keep it here for next time.
You can go on my town government and look it up.
They haven't had a hearing on Worcester Sand and Gravel's Pit.
Not yet.
I haven't, no.
Right?
Because he told him...
They were talking about meeting in the first part of January, so this is gonna be it. Because they haven't met before tonight, before tomorrow night, right?
Well, they have. What they did was...
In January?
They sent...
Yeah, last week.
Lynn sent him, okay, when he was filling out the application, I said, "You know, you left this blank and this blank." And he says, "Oh, you know, it's really none of my business." So I said, "Okay." So I submitted it to the ZBA, and then Lynn sent me, she added me as a CC to an email to him that he hadn't filled it out, because he can't reference the building inspector's file. And so she said he had to, uh, update or resubmit his file, and I haven't seen her.
So there's nothing imminent that we have to comment on. We'll meet again before they'll meet.
Not until tomorrow night.
Do they need to put him on?
I don't.
Who, the ZBA?
Yes.
Is meeting with who?
No, they met last week.
Memory care, continual care, community, whatever they're called.
Tomorrow will be the third Wednesday, and they meet the second Wednesday. But there is talk about having next month a week early.
To be, to be ahead of the deadline.
I believe they have a...
So you're, you're, you're questioning this because they want us to tweak something for economy?
There may be some things that they want us to look at for town meetings, so I think it's...
That's right, this is, this is all for the recycle file, anyway.
If we're looking at the proposal for, uh...
That's what Tim's taking.
Continual care retirement community, that's not how we, we term it in our definitions, right?
No.
If, if they're offering the plan that we saw
Why wouldn't they?
As a plan that...
Yes, I get it.
It would seem as though, um, we might want to...
No, I feel they also bought a house on Summer Road, and they want part of the back of it.
It's land on Summer Road that's privately owned, that's zoned limited...
Correct.
Business, but it's already owned by them.
Oh, okay.
Whatchuset Tree is on land that... Whatchuset Tree doesn't own the land they're on, right?
I don't know, Whatchuset Tree is Gonzales.
Right. But I think that that's land that's part of it.
I thought it was Millows. But I, you know how you just glance at something, you don't study it anymore? I could be totally wrong.
No, I think this, I think Worcester Sand's land goes all the way up to Summer Road.
It does. I thought that...
Yeah, I think so.
Here, let me see if I can trip over the cable and...
Get it on camera?
I think what we stand, but...
Watch this one?
Yeah, because this is... This is, um... Mellow is the little one.
Oh, okay.
And this is Whatchuset Tree. And this is Morlock. This is Morlock, this is Mellow, this is Whatchuset Tree. This is Whatchuset Tree. This is Mellow.
And that's not a lot line, that's just the, um, the zone?
That's not a lot, no, that's the zone.
Sure.
And I think that Worcester Sand owns that whole piece all the way up to Summer Road.
Well, you can find out when you talk, after you talk to the building inspector.
I can go online. Yeah, I'll look at, I'll talk to the building inspector.
Okay, you can continue on. Okay, you can continue on. The only thing he had on the agenda, you were discussing about a new bylaw for the, for cutting stone, stone walls. Did you wanna do that the next meeting, Tim?
Um, we've got a hearing scheduled for two weeks from tonight for a scenic road hearing.
Right, that's the Lyman Road cutting through.
Because.
Because we have to have.
The way the bylaw reads is that any disturbance of a stone wall trips the scenic road bylaw. And therefore, we have to have a hearing.
You, you were proposing that we do it all at one at the.
So we have never, in all the years that we've had the Scenic Road Act in place, which was seventy-four, we passed it. We adopted this.
Joint meeting?
Huh?
You had a joint meeting with Dennis Hotwood?
In, in all the years we've done this, we've never had a hearing for a curb cut through a stone wall.
Oh, okay.
We've had hearings for tree removal by the highway department where we did a joint hearing.
Yeah.
But the, but every time anybody's made a break in a stone wall to get access to a lot, they've just gone and got a curb cut permit from the selectmen, which doesn't require a hearing. Now. So, but technically, we're supposed to hold a hearing.
A state law says.
So the question is, do, in the selectmen, in the, in the, in the case where there's no planning board, the selectmen can serve as the board that deals with curb cuts to stone, through stone walls. So do we wanna put a bylaw on the books that says, this would be a town bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, that, that looks at our adoption of the Scenic Roads Act and says that in the case of a single-family residential lot where a curb cut is gonna be issued by the selectmen but involves access through a stone wall, that they would hold the public hearing for the scenic road act.
Doing everything at once, yeah.
And that in the case of a commercial structure or, you know, whatever, any other lot besides multifamily and all that sort of stuff, that the planning board would do it.
You wanna get that in for this town meeting?
Yeah, if, if people are.
Yeah, that would be good for a couple of hours.
Work out the words, I think it would.
Does that make sense, though?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause why make someone go through a curb cut?
And a hearing.
And a hearing with us and we have to post it in newspaper and no one's ever, I mean, you're gonna deny someone the access?
Just, you gotta get the selectmen to agree with this.
Why don't you just change the form that the selectmen use?
Well, I still.
Part of the subdivision.
I mean, it can just be.
So we need to get it out of there and into the selectmen's hands. That's fine.
So I'll, I'll play with that.
Okay. Most of the selectmen will come back and say, why does the planning board do well curb cuts?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't imagine. And then the other thing is that we've, we've been, we've been given a grant for a center village study. There are four towns in the study. Each town will be individualized based on its needs. There'll be some things that'll be similar in terms of recommendations that, you know, model bylaws that you might adopt, that sort of thing changes. But the question was, how large an area would we want a center village study to look at? And so Jay drew a circle. It's a third of a mile from the center of town. And so a third of the mile goes through the school.
Yeah.
It goes down Central Street out to the Chedco land essentially that's under, you know, protection. It goes up Walnut to the same general area. It goes Highland through Cardville, up across the railroad tracks. And it goes out West Street past.
Highland starts at just about the railroad tracks.
Yeah, but I mean, it, so it doesn't go very far in Highland, but it goes through Cardville and Highland, you know, just past. And it, it goes through just about St. Joseph's, Benz, you know, McKelk's, that area. And then down Linden.
South.
Down, down Linden.
Oh, okay.
Just past Skipper's.
Yeah.
And all, and then down south to the school, just about to, well, here's Barry, so.
And so what about it?
So that would be the, I mean, it, does that seem a reasonable zone to include in a study?
I think so, yeah.
It includes a lot of the stuff we've talked about for complete streets and sidewalks and all that.
It catches a lot of the small villages, Cardville and all of that.
And then once you get beyond it, you get into some bigger parcels that, well, you get this to the Wasco project and all the Chedco protected land and the town protected land here. But it does include the lower part of the over fifty-five that we approved on Linden, on Highland.
Highland.
So, you know, it's within that scope. And, um. There's gonna be a core committee to work with the folks from Central Mass. And and then probably a larger group, but there'll be a small steering committee. Are you interested in participating in that?
Sure. Yeah.
All right. I mean, we don't, all the planning board can be on it, I suppose, you know, if we want, or some of us can be on it or whatever we wanna do, but. And then we need to decide about a few other people to add to it. But we can think about that?
Evie.
Nineteen Kada, stuff like that.
Okay.
That's it?
Oh, I did read something in the, led it to the editor. I meant to cut it out.
Did you, did you're in the meeting so the mic can go off?
Yeah.